Just so breathing, breathing deeper.
And what the hell with the bad.
Yes, can you hear us?
Listen to you.
Two, two.
And Matt and Russ is the guy talking to you.
Oh, that's been me a lot of years.
Oh, I'm very good.
Just do as he says.
I know exactly.
The brushes that we like for, they're like for something. For the brushes and could only do one certain.
Why don't you get your stuff in the bowl?
Okay. Well, we tried that other side. And what happens is it burns.
Thank you, Vera.
So now, you know, those are my brushes, but it's very important. I thought I seen.
I tried all three of them.
That's where we're close.
This should be this B.
Very fun to hear.
Yeah, there's sisters and. The way I was used to it.
They think it's used to which. Both of your birds.
We want to shoot afterwards?
Yeah, we have a.
Good luck. Can you hear us? Oh, yes, can you hear us?
No, it's hard enough. It's a softer with you.
Anybody here? Hello?
For a change.
Right.
Darkness, light, all that stuff.
Dark swat.
Bill knows, can you hear us?
All right, good meeting. We'll see you tomorrow. Well, I'm saying good evening. Bye.
How about now?
Can you hear us?
Yes.
We can.
You can hear us?
Can you hear us?
Bingo. Sorry. Welcome to the modern meeting.
How many months of Zoom have we done and you still can't get it? Are we ready to roll then?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Good evening and welcome to today's meeting. Today is Monday, August the ninth, twenty twenty-one. The time is now five oh five P M. We're a little late. That's some technical lift will be for a minute. And tonight is our a work session. And we have a few items to discuss tonight. Item one is a report from Debbie Wagner, who's our lobbyist. Item two is an Aliate discussion. Item three A is minors in possession as municipal violation. Item four is amendment to chapter sixteen to include theft as a municipal violation. And five is a follow-up discussion regarding power and liability. First item, of course, is a report from Ms. Wagner. I talked to her today and I told her that we would give her twenty minutes or so to give us a report of what she has. Ms. Wagner, you're welcome and.
Thank you.
Come down, come down to Denver.
It's wonderful to be here in person.
Yes.
Very nice. First, I want to thank everyone for your support this past session. And just give a brief overview of the session. You should have a copy of the legislative report. We tracked over a hundred bills for the city. And I also participated in municipal league lobby meetings to discuss bills and requisition on bills and worked with some of the municipal league lobbyists on bills affecting the city, such as House Bill thirteen oh one, which was a marijuana cultivation bill. And both Audrey and Les were very helpful and working on amendments to that bill. So I'd like to thank Mike and the staff and Les for their assistance during the session. The session was very, was disjointed. There were, the legislature convened in January to swear in new members. They ran a few pandemic bills and they were in session for three days and recessed for a month. So legislators and staff could get the COVID vaccine. And then they reconvened in February. By law, the session, by the constitution, the session is a hundred twenty days. So instead of ending in early to mid-May, it ended June seventh or eighth. And then the governor has a month to sign bills, veto bills, if what we've come law. He, there were six hundred twenty-three bills introduced during the session. Five hundred eight bills passed both houses. I would characterize the session as being, one, I call it the pandemic recovery, because a lot of the bills dealt with increased federal funding that's spilling over into interim committees this summer, as well as, I think, eight hundred million in state general funds that came about because of a positive economic surplus revenue forecast. Last year, the Joint Budget Committee cut about three billion out of the general fund budget, which is overall about thirty-four billion. And that was a ten percent cut. So the Joint Budget Committee restored a lot of the funding cuts they took last year during the session. And then they, the governor really emphasized bills and legislation to stimulate the economy, particularly in economic recovery for small businesses, behavioral health care and focusing on underserved populations. So he vetoed four bills, mostly dealing with the Department of Revenue and one with the Lieutenant Governor. The key bills that passed and we worked, the city was engaged in several of them, were the public option bill, House Bill twelve thirty-two. That was amended substantially. Instead of a public option, it now focuses on reducing health insurance premiums by fifteen percent over three years to people that are on the individual and individual and small group health plans. And it doesn't get implemented for another year. The Insurance Commissioner has to convene a workholder, a stakeholder group to come up with some recommendations on how to reduce healthcare costs. That was a major push. The transportation bill, Senate Bill two sixty, was another key initiative from the governor, the Democrats and Republicans. The pushback on that bill was it increases fees over, I think, ten-year period. Fees on gasoline, Uber and Lyft rides and food delivery services to finance construction projects. It also includes a significant amount of federal funds that the state is getting from the pandemic and a general fund transfer of about a hundred seventy million. So there was, there's been a big emphasis on increasing funding for transportation the past, I'd say, five to ten years. And this year it succeeded. So there will be a lot of funding coming into counties and municipalities for increased rich construction and recares, as well as state highway maintenance. There's also a transfer of, I believe, fourteen million from the multimodal transportation fund that's part of this bill to the Southwest Chief to help with the transition to the front range passenger rail. So that was a major bill. Other key items were a bill, House Bill eleven sixty-two, to, wait a second, to increase, to slash greenhouse emissions and a bill to increase funding for housing and behavioral health. Two bills that passed, the state got about three billion in Federal American Rescue Act plan funds called, the acronym is ARPA. And what the legislature did before they adjourned was to fund about a hundred fifty million, wait, a hundred fifty million each into housing programs, behavioral health and economic recovery. And they put about five hundred million into those three program areas and established an interim committee that will meet this summer, starting next week, to make recommendations on how funding should be spent in the areas of behavioral health, economic stimulus and housing programs. And most likely what will happen is those interim committee recommendations will turn into legislation that session. The state has three years to spend the federal ARPA funds. So some of that stimulus funding you will see this year. There are several bills in this packet, especially in the arena of economic development and housing, that the city, I think, is already working on accessing some of the federal funds as well as general funds. The other area that there was considerable legislation was in the criminal justice area. There was a ketamine bill that passed that strengthens requirements on emergency medical technicians and law enforcement. Well, emergency medical technicians can recommend the use of ketamine if a person is stopped by law enforcement. There was a law enforcement cleanup bill that modified Senate Bill two seventeen that passed last session. And this clarified some of the reporting requirements for law enforcement agencies. And then there was a bill, Criminal Colorado Criminal Justice Reform Coalition, worked with DAs, public defenders, the judiciary to come up with about a two-hundred-page bill to completely redo misdemeanors and petty offenses. So Les may be briefing you on some of those.
Not less than asked to.
We'll ask her.
I know, I know, that's right.
It deals with traffic offenses and minor crimes.
We have that. I'm sorry, Debbie, I don't mean to.
That's okay. I downloaded it to look at it and I'm like, holy.
I bet.
This is a two-hundred-page bill.
Yeah.
So it goes, and there'll probably be a cleanup bill for that next session because oftentimes drafting staff misses citations.
Sure.
The General Assembly runs an annual, what we call cleanup bill to, that makes corrections to any citations that are incorrectly cited. So that's kind of a quick summary. What I did in the report was lay out the bills by, I grouped them by subject matter area, like criminal justice, public safety, economic development. And I put in the effective dates. And if you, yes?
Oh, no, I was gonna ask, you were talking about the weapons. Was there any truth to the possible, anything there about the possible abolishment of concealed weapon permits in Colorado?
No, I don't think you would ever see, see that happen. And I can tell you several legislators have a concealed weapon. No, in fact, hundred and twelve years ago, there was a Colorado Springs legislator, very petite woman, who had concealed.
No, just kidding, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But it's, I, I know.
I know.
Unless someone tried to do a ballot initiative.
Okay.
Okay, but to my knowledge, I did not hear any mention of legislation along those lines. So the bills that Trinidad engaged in, and I want to thank the mayor on one of them because he testified about midnight one night. It was the Crime Justice Prevention Bill, which counsel, we had a Zoom meeting and were able to get some amendments on that bill. It takes effect, it's House Bill twelve fifteen. It creates a crime justice prevention program as well. It's a loan program for persons involved in the criminal justice system to help them get a fresh start, develop business plans and hopefully start their own business. And that bill takes effect, I believe, DOLA had implemented. They administer the program and they have to leave issue on RFP to entities that would like to participate by September.
And from that bill, the city of Trinidad will get about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next, I think, two years. And it could continue if we, if that program shows some progress.
Program sunsets, I believe, in twenty twenty-seven. And hopefully, the lobbyists that went on that bill would like to continue funding for the program. Mayor's correct, there's about three hundred and forty or fifty thousand earmarked for the city in that bill. And it, it's a community-led bill, so a community foundation will be working with different community programs.
Yeah, and actually, the Trinidad Community Foundation is going to be working with the Latino organization on Colorado Springs are going to be working together to make, to work on it.
So that, that was a big thank you for Representative Holtorf because he was the, one of the prime sponsors in the house with Representative Ortiz from Centennial. And the current program is housed in Aurora and Colorado Springs. And Representative Holtorf was very emphatic that a city or municipality in his district be included in the expansion phase. So we owe him a big thanks for selecting Trinidad, suggesting Trinidad. And thank you for agreeing to participate in the bill. Senate Bill eight is the bill that removes the name Junior from Junior College. One college in northeast Colorado didn't want the name Junior removed, so.
It's got a stern.
Stern, yeah. So the bill affects, oh, I think Otero Junior College and Trinidad Junior College. That's taken effect. Fishers Peak got additional funding in a bill that added, I think, twenty million in stimulus funding for infrastructure improvements in state parks. That was Senate Bill one twelve.
I think out of that, I think the Fishes people get like three million or something like that.
Right, yeah. And this was, it's, this amount was in the bill that initially started last year, but due to the pandemic, the funding was cut significantly. And then, I think, thirteen oh one is a marijuana cultivation bill. And that sets up, in fact, the Marijuana Enforcement Division has recently announced, they're just starting to conduct rulemaking hearing, House Bill twelve sixteen, which is marijuana license usability to change designation between retail and medical marijuana dispensaries. And thirteen oh one is the outdoor cultivation measures, which deals with adverse events, weather events for outdoor marijuana cultivation. And then the other part of that bill deals with cross pollination between hemp and marijuana, which from sitting in on the hearing can be a very controversial issue. And then thirteen seventeen is regulating marijuana concentrates. And this bill, because of the high number of teen suicides and basically overdoses due to the fact that marijuana concentrates can be ninety to a hundred percent, when probably thirty years ago, they were maybe three to five percent. So it is a big issue and there were a lot of mothers with teenage children that testified at the bill hearing on this bill about their concerns about, especially teens whose brains haven't developed, about the impact. So the bill requires you to do a research study and make recommendations. So the Marijuana Enforcement Division and the Department of Revenue is currently conducting rulemaking feedback sessions with advocates, with basically a cross-section of proponents, opponents. And that just started last week. There's also three, there was a recent opioid settlement announced. And the state will be getting a huge sum of money on that. The Congress is still working on another large federally funded infrastructure package. And I can email Mike the breakout of funding. But the funds will basically be used for infrastructure projects, water, sewer, roads, broadband, trains. So I think Amtrak is hoping to get a large amount for passenger rail in the state. So there will be federal funds most likely coming in, I would say, another month or two.
I know the Rails Commission is looking at, hopefully, it'll be seeing like two point four billion out of that.
Yeah, yeah, it's several billion. And I know Senators Hickinlooper and Bennett have been very involved. In fact, Senator Hickinlooper is one of, I think, two freshman senators that have been included in the group that's negotiating the compromise with the House and the White House. So, and he's very familiar with some of the issues affecting Colorado. Also wildfire funding will be in that bill. And then interim committees, I think I've mentioned several of them. These are on the last page, but there's the Behavioral Health Recovery Act, Economic Recovery and Relief Cash Fund. And the, oh, there's another committee establishing an Oversight Committee on Tax Policy. And the Oversight Committee is composed of legislators, but there's a twenty-one-member task force that has representatives from local governments, counties, state agencies and the public that will make recommendations on changes in tax policy. And then there's probably ten to twelve standing committees. And these are committees that deal with transportation. The Transportation Legislation Oversight Committee met last week. A good part of their discussion centered on the I-70 closure through Runwood's Camp Springs and the fact that it's going to resolve an increased trucking cost and, i.e., increased consumer costs for food. There's also a Pension Planning Committee that deals with public pensions, a Water Resource Review Committee and a Sales and Use Tax Simplification Committee. So that's kind of a, and these committees will start working this month and work August, September, October, make recommendations for the Executive Committee of Legislative Council to recommend bills for next session.
Hey Debbie, I was always wondering this. Sometimes, and I think there was one that you just mentioned just now, every now and then, one of these subcommittees, they ask representatives from different municipalities to participate. How can we be notified that some of these committees or subcommittees are available? That if somebody wants to, from the city, wants to throw in their hat to say we'd like to participate? How do we go about that?
Let me know, or let Mike know. If you're going through the bills, some of the appointments have been made to committees, but like on the Behavioral Health Task Force, Housing, Economic Recovery, there's language in the bill and in a resolution adopted by Latch Council that includes a representative of local government or a representative of counties. Like on the Marijuana Enforcement Division Rulemaking, that's a more informal group. But if you see any bills where a task force is created, and there's several on what I call the environmental climate bills, if you see any where there's a task force, let me know. Generally, we will either work with CML and let them know you're interested in sitting on a committee, like the Sales and Use Tax Committee has a local government representative. I think it's from a metro municipality. But let, let me or Mike know and I'll help you. Either we'll work with CML or the governor's office has boards and commissions. And this is, if there's a board or commission you're interested in being on, there's a process to work with the governor's office to apply. Oftentimes, they want someone from a rural area. Sometimes the statute says there's an equal split between Dems and Republicans. Sometimes it's a congressional district or it can just be a public member. So if you aren't interested, let, let me know or Mike and I'll work to help you. I can send Mike the link to the governor's office of boards and commissions. For instance, there was a bill that passed this session, the ketamine bill, that requires a statewide association of psychiatrists and anesthesiologists to make a recommendation for a member with clinical experience to serve on as an advisory committee in the Department of Health. So both organizations submitted names. And you, there's a form to fill out in the governor's office if it's a gubernatorial appointment. Some of these, like on the Behavioral Health Task Force and Housing, you submitted the names to leadership. And for instance, on the MED rulemaking, we would submit a name if you're interested in participating as one of the task force members to the MED.
I was just recently, Ms. Oboltry was appointed to the Creative Industries.
How are the Creative Industries?
Oh, yes, I heard you mention that at the last day.
So how did your name get in there? Do you know how that?
I was asked to apply by the head of the agency.
Okay.
Since we had had some party.
Margaret, and oftentimes, state agencies will reach out. Like I know, there's a state historical advisory committee. There's several advisory committees. And the key is, if you work closely with someone in a state agency, to see if they would be willing, but to get some letters of support or endorsement too. But no, there's, I will send like the link to the governor's boards and commissions. Go through it because there are probably, I don't know, a hundred boards and commissions. And a lot of them want, you know, a public member. It'll list the requirements and then it also lists when the terms expire. So I know the governor likes to make appointments from different parts of the state, the broad geographic representation.
Well, you know, Debbie, you know, you've been with us since, what, two thousand, twenty eighteen, I think it was, that we brought you on board? You've done a tremendous job for us and I really appreciate the work that you do. And I know, obviously, you've worked your butt off. I know I've talked to you Sundays, Saturdays, nights, days. You and I've had multiple conversations, but I just wanted to thank you for the work that you do for the city of Trinidad.
Well, I appreciate it and the feelings mutual. It's, it, it makes a difference, I think, having a voice at the Capitol and reaching out to your legislator. For instance, I got a call a week ago about an application for a state historical fund grant. And both legislators were very receptive to making, submitting a letter in support of the funding project. And it really makes a difference if you, if you pick up the phone or shoot an email to your legislator, a board member on a board. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
On item two, Aliate discussion, Mr. Valentine and Buck. Would you just, so, thank you, Mayor. After the last meeting where, you know, Val Luna requested use of Aliate, council requested a little bit more information. And in your packet, and Audrey could probably speak to this a little more, since Debbie's here, she could have. But one of the, I think it was the House. But one of the, I think it was the House bill added communal outdoor dining areas. Do you want to say that? It's something we've been trying to figure out where and how we do this. So that information is in your packet. Like I said, Audrey could speak to it better. And then I'll let Bob show what he's, we had engineering kind of take a look at, at the, the alley, several concepts. As you know, it's, it's not accessible, it needs to work. So I'll turn it over to Bob there.
Hi Mayor, this is Council. Basically, we came up with a couple preliminary conceptual, they're not finals, but designs by any means. One of the concepts was to basically just go in, remove the existing planters, brick, concrete that's there, and just go back in with concrete. About that would be... That's sheet number two. It has an estimated cost of $45,000. One thing that I noticed on the, on the cost estimates, we probably could shave that a little bit. We have Plastics, there's not much, there's $1,920, 40 cubic yards of Plastics. We do have a really good material that we produce out of the landfill. We're crushing our existing concrete, so we could save some money on there. The noticeable difference would be the concept where we go, it should be sheet number four. Basically, it's got the, it's terraced, so those pads are, you could set tables out there. On the other one, the slope would be 3.7%, so all the tables would be leaning. So in this terrace concept, we have an ADA ramp up against the existing Bellaluna building, and two concrete terraces, they'd be separated by a couple steps down. Although the cost for that alternative is considerably more. It came in at $115,000. But, with that being said, $32,000 of that was Plastics base course. We probably could shave about $30,000 off of that if we used our, our material out of the landfill for that one as well. Maybe not quite 30, but we still have the cost of placing it and camping it, but there would be a saving, so. But for rough numbers, you could probably subtract $30,000 off of that, that option.
What are you doing with the area down below there, where the concrete ends, to where the parking lot is?
Well, it's a good question. That is city-owned. Is she here or is, this is basically, I don't know, until we intercept the parcel that's on, it's...
Kip Hapten?
Kip Hapten, thank you. We're not sure what they want to do with that, so we were only thinking the improvements to the end of the Bellaluna building.
Who doesn't want, I mean, nobody explained to you what do you, what do you mean by that?
Well, Kip Hapten hasn't come forward. I mean, unless they do have plans, I haven't seen it for what they want to do. Because there's, as you've been back there, there's a huge tree that needs to be removed, and it's growing up out of the sidewalk, and sidewalk needs to be removed.
That's our property, right?
No.
No, it isn't.
Just this strip. This strip is our property.
And then, where the alley, that continues down, that's ours though? Where the two red lines are here?
Yes.
That's ours?
Yeah.
But nothing on the side of it, right?
On the sides of it, incorrect, is not ours. So we're, we've been in contact with Paul Glenn, Ian Crawford's architect, and they have a couple, they have some plans for the Columbian. One of them, they want to do a stairway where that elevator shaft is, it's called an elevator shaft, Paul knows it's, it's labeled as an elevator shaft. This is the big steel door, and they want to bring a set of steps out of there to access the basement of that building. I'm not sure, that's our alley. So I don't know if we let them come in our alley and do additional improvements to their building. That's up to you guys.
They haven't proposed anything yet, but it is existing, the shaft is there, there's a, what appears to be a storm right there. They also have stairs in the landing that are in, exist in that right away, so we're working through that with them. As far as the alley that you were talking about, Mr. Schu, that I have had in passing a discussion with Carl Gabrielson, and they're, they're talking about doing something seating area behind that one unfinished segment of the Champions Building back here. So whatever we do, we'll, should, should we decide to move forward, we'll make sure it matches everything as we go forward.
But that would put us in complete ADA compliance with that one section ending at the Bellaluna building?
That's correct. Yeah, would we be doing an ADA ramp landing on up from basically the, where our property to Main Street?
Here's a question I have, like I said, is that, that House Bill 211027, that's the communal area, basically, we couldn't have, if we, you know, to follow those guidelines, we couldn't have a single proprietary business going in there that could be open to anyone within 1,000 feet from what I read.
Right.
Correct. So, I'm not sure, can I know that? Bellaluna?
Yeah.
That didn't make sense to me.
Very right.
Currently, in that area, you have, in that radius, you have, of course, Bellaluna, Tizme Treatme, Mission at the Bell, Sitas across the street. Hopefully, I'm not missing...
Smokehouse.
Smokehouse may or may not, well, at 1,000 feet, that's...
And Café.
The Café?
Yeah, it might even extend as far as Moose's, I don't know. So, yeah, so rules that, there's, I mean, it's in the bill, but there's some room making on how, how it would have to be managed.
Yes, the other question is, is, you know, if we decide to move forward with renovation of this, of Alié, would we be talking about six months, a year? But, you know, and the other thing is, taking that money from whatever resource that we have, are we taking it away from another resource that we shouldn't be using it on? That would be something that you could tell us, or is it be okay?
And this is not budgeted for, so it would be probably out of the CIP or marijuana funds. It is an alley, it's called Alié, it's kind of a corridor to downtown, it's more than your normal alley, so it's part of it. We're constantly getting complaints about our streets, so that's a decision that has to be made. Are you going to do Alié or, you know, go to the street? So I, you know, engineering has developed this to a point, it, it may need more tweaking and stuff, but we've got a good estimate, and we're in budget time, so.
Mike, what, what do you feel? These are under there, Dan, I don't...
Uh, just a gas line, right?
Correct.
And then we have electrical that is actually through there, it, it actually runs into Bellaluna's, and the streetlights that are outside hanging on Bellaluna's are City Street. We like them up, so, but the infrastructure is actually, we are building, buying an agreement from way back, so.
So I guess the big question here is, you know, do we want to put money on CIP here? Should we use that money elsewhere for other roads, or other infrastructure issues that we have? So I think that's kind of the question that I'm seeing here, so I think...
What's the projected cost analysis for the total present?
$115,000 if we go with the ADA ramps. If we just lay concrete in there, just take out all the bricks, all the planters, everything, lay concrete, $45,000.
But that's not going to be an issue because we have that agreement that we have to keep the bricks in place with the streets?
Not in, not in that area. These aren't the street bricks.
Is the, the 3.7 grade on that, that option, is that compliant with the ADA?
It is.
But if you terraced it where the tables could sit, you said the ramp would be...
ADA-compliant as well.
Right, but it would be along the Bellaluna building?
That is correct.
Well, wouldn't that defeat the purpose of what they were wanting to do with the window anyway, if we got the railing and that?
We've actually provided a 1%. It doesn't show it on here, Mr. Goodall, but that first 10, 15 feet is 1%, which would provide them a landing or access to do what they would want to do.
All right, and along those lines, it's, because of the narrowness of the alley and to give a good seating area, engineering looked at that, but the ADA ramp along the Columbian, we have an elevator shaft that's in the way, we have stairs and landing that are existing in the way, and we have storm drains, so where do we put the access is...
That's why we're driven like that.
We also have access to the Tizme Treatme.
At the bottom, correct.
And Mr. Williamson, that was a good question. Steve Carell came up with the, we're going to replace that gas line because we don't want to do all those improvements with an old gas line. He's at $15,790 for his replacement of that gas line.
So in regards to which way you're going, still add another 15 grand?
Correct.
Using our own material, we will be able to deduct a substantial amount off of the terraced bit, up to, you said, 30,000 possibly?
Approximately, yes.
We're still...
May I make a suggestion? I see this, this alley a lot, and it's really what you would consider a busy alley, and there's all kinds of trash receptacles out there. It's very unkept, and those, I don't know whose idea those planters were, but they're a maintenance nightmare, and they have little pebbles in them, and the kids go and throw them all over the place. It would be my preference, if we do that, the better terraced improvement, and that we continue doing it, because I think communal dining areas, because of the pandemic, have been so popular this past year, and I think it's a trend that's going to continue. Rather than Bellaluna only having use of that public land, anybody within what's required of that, that legislation can be within and use that, and I think that's an ideal situation. I would really like the money to come out of marijuana money, because the streets do need it attention, and I'd like to have that money taken out of marijuana funds. That way, the money through the budget that's allocated for streets can remain, and we don't take anything.
I agree, but I just did a quick measure on Google Earth, and I mean, 1,000 feet from the south end of Alié would encompass all the way down to...
Los Anamos.
The Los Anamos Grill, believe it or not.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, and then west, that, that includes several others too. I mean, I really agree with you, I think that would be a huge improvement...
Yes, it would.
...into that space. And the source, you guys know better than me, but I mean, I think that would be a huge improvement as to what it is. The, the cost of the 115, is that the gas line too you said?
No, no, it's a plus.
But that would come, that would come up, that was a lot of the gas money.
And then, is there any chance you could lay spare conduit in there at all to, to have passage underground?
Sure.
I think you do.
I think, especially with being that it's a communal type...
Dining area.
Area dining area. Be nice to clean it up.
The communal dining area, the new law permits people with alcoholic beverages from other places to walk them down?
Yes. That's where I say the rulemaking is still in question in how we...
Open or not?
Loosen stuff up.
But if you really read that, it says that, let's say you're at a table, and you're buying liquor from, let's say, Moose's, and they bring it down to you. I think that's the only place that you can really get your liquor from. You can't bring it from Moose's, and maybe from some other, maybe from the smokehouse. In other words, everybody can't be bringing the liquor, that's what I, that's what I...
I don't know. Yeah, well, it's going to be, you gotta wait for the rulemaking to see who, who's in charge of making sure that nobody's inviting too much, and who, who has control of that security and that liquor license and...
They're giving us hats with them.
So this, this bid deals with making it terraced and everything else, what about lighting and all the other stuff that'll be essential for evening time dining and everything else? None of that is included in there either, is it?
Lighting?
It is not. As Mike said, there's existing lighting on the side of, that we...
That lights it up?
I envision, you know, a dining area with the string lights, the outdoor string lights with the logs and everything.
Need to be railing, is that in there?
There is some railing costs, yes, it's in the, it's in this cost estimate.
And what about tables and chairs and things like that?
That is not.
No.
BYO.
BYO, yeah, bring, bring your own booze, but bring your own table and chair.
Well, that might be a discussion for maybe the second quarter of marijuana funds, because this isn't going to be viable till next summer. You know, I, I spend a lot of time downtown. I should have put that in a different way. I, I town a lot. Let me recheck. It seems like Trinidad businesses, like our small communities, our businesses don't stay open till at 6:00, so I see a lot of tourists trying to find someplace where they can sit down and look at the buildings and, you know, enjoy the climate. And I think this might be a great spot to do that, and maybe we can put some kind of directional information in there. Okay, if you go two blocks down, it's the History Museum, if you go down Commercial.
Some wayfinding signs?
Yes, and maybe...
Because we have money for that, don't we?
Well, I, yeah, and I think the Tourism Board can maybe do something in that, have a board, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, removing those planters that are in there and kind of opening up and just figuring out, who, you know, what, like the Columbian, how much belongs is there that they want to do? I guess get that cleared up, and then you have an idea of where to take it from there, I think would be the answer.
And then, you know, you're in, open another can of worms, they're going to want to know where the art that's in there is going to go. That'll have to be relocated. The Spinning Springs, the Spindales still in there.
No one's going to be sad. I'm sorry.
That, that was attorneyless downs of Casey.
You know, let's, let's do this, you know, we have our planner here with us tonight. Have you looked at this and have any ideas, anything different that you...
Well, I haven't seen the, the drawings that Bob shared with you guys.
Okay.
But listening to you tonight, I think, you know, if you could include some bunkers or something along the other wall, that, you know, where people like to sit is usually on the edge of an open space or public space like that. So if you create edges that have little enough square places to sit, that people will use them. Probably, if it's going to be shared by a dozen restaurants, and we're hoping that restaurants are going to privately buy the tables and furniture, that'll be a fight that we could probably avoid by just making those public furnitures. Otherwise, I think, you know, you have this, this situation where nobody wants to put their neck out for furniture that somebody else might take more advantage of. So I think, I think that probably should...
Well, I think with, it being on our property, we're going to have to put everything that's going to go in there. We don't want to open ourselves to a situation where we allow someone else to put stuff in there and they want to claim state to it. We'll need to put in what's going to be in there, I think. That's my personal opinion.
Want to think about cleaning? And making that area, that's... And making that area, that's a, that's a good help.
All right, good discussion.
Okay, anything else, councilman?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
On item three, minors in possession as municipal violation.
Mayor, council members, we have, we, those of us in municipal court, have been contacted by law enforcement and have been asked to add these as ordinances so that we can enforce these as violations in municipal court. And we're more than happy to do that. Ms. Semmel is here for the record, she has been working very hard on these. These are patterned after state statute. It would simply make these municipal offenses cited in a municipal court.
Are you talking about both, we had four of the items in the top margins, item three?
Um, mine, well, everything you have in, in item three, mine is clearly labeled, but the one ordinance is for minors in possession of alcohol or marijuana, any 121. And then the other one would be petty, excuse me, petty theft.
Mr. Downs, I apologize for my ignorance, but when you say we were contacted by, who contacted?
Individual officers. The school enforcement officer, Josh Huey.
Okay.
Also Jason Velotti, officers who are dealing with a lot of this kind of thing. So that's who?
I was wondering in the marijuana one, I don't see any exception for 18 to 21 who have a medical prescription. So, so either that should be an affirmative defense to it, or because sections three and four, like two and three, make it illegal for anyone under the age of 21 to possess or use marijuana, or have that kind of paraphernalia, and so I'm assuming that if they have a medical...
Good point, we can look into that, we can look into that, that'll make sense.
Yeah, but it's not listed as one, there's an affirmative defense section, it's not listed as one, if they have a prescription.
I do want to make a correction on page two of the ordinance for marijuana and alcohol. I, I put the wrong state statute, it's 18-13-122, not 18-3. We were right on time.
Well, I, being that it's been brought forward to us by schools, I think we need to listen to it.
I do too.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're all in, I'm doing it there. Any questions, Mr. Allen?
I had one for less earlier. So, so if a minor violates a municipal ordinance, is that less severe than receiving a misdemeanor charge?
It is.
With the fingerprinting and the booking and everything else that goes with it?
I'm sorry to interrupt, it is less severe, that's correct.
Okay, because I was reading about minor in possession is the most common cause of arrest under the age of 21, it's a criminal offense, right?
It is a criminal offense, yep. And it would still be a criminal offense, it would simply be prosecuted in municipal court. And, you know, it would be at the officer's discretion, like a lot of things. We have kind of, I don't want to say concurrent jurisdiction, but they could cite a no proof of insurance to get into muni court, or they could cite it into county court.
So in the case of a minor's first offense, a possession that affects the future, he's pretty much at the mercy of the city attorney and the municipal court, right?
Well, yes, I mean, which is a lot better than being at the mercy of the, you know, with all due respect to my colleagues, to the, you know, prosecuting attorney in the court and county court. That is a conviction that tends to stay on one's record. Muni court violations, I mean, I've never researched that, but muni court violations don't tend to stay on records very long.
No, and can I approach?
Please, Ms. DeVall?
Mr. Downs. So right now, a juvenile can have their case expunged after 42 days of the, if the prosecution has no objection to their case being expunged after they complete everything, so they, if they have to do a class, if they have to pay fines, part costs, once that's done, I give it to Mr. Downs to look at the case, if there's no objection. Then 42 days, that case gets expunged, and it's like it's never existed. And that's what's going on with juveniles, just so that you know.
So you're saying, Desi, that they're slipping through the cracks?
No, what I'm saying is they changed the law to where if, I guess, to give the juveniles an extra chance? I'm not really sure how it came to be. All I know is that if you commit a crime, and you're a juvenile, and it doesn't have any objection, you've completed everything you're supposed to complete, and the case gets expunged, and it's like it never existed.
And that generally, I don't mean to interrupt, that generally is the rule, even in district court. If you have a kid that has like a non-aggravated juvenile case, and, because most juvenile cases are in district court, but they go through the process, they get an adjudication, which is a juvenile conviction, they get an adjudication, they can seal that. You generally, when you get somebody's NCIC or CCIC criminal printout, you, you don't get their juvenile record. So even though it wasn't sealed, you don't have their juvenile record. But it's always easier to seal or expunge a juvenile record. What Ms. Semmel is talking about in municipal court is along those lines. And we have, I mean, we treat everyone more gently, we never jail anybody, I mean, limited exceptions. But it's just easier to expunge if you're a juvenile.
Now, what do they do, what do they do with habitual offenders?
Well, that is, that is in district court, habitual offenders are usually no felony cases. And that is usually three times the top end of the presumptive range for a, what we call a big bitch, or twice, excuse me, large habitual, sorry, but that's, or the small habitual is usually two times. But that's in district court, and that's multiple felony convictions.
What it does, it just gives a kid a break to where they don't carry a record with them forever.
Right.
This ain't something you would do, if you're seeing a juvenile for the fourth time, you're not going to expunge him.
Right.
It's something that is going, they're going to carry, so it just give it...
Yeah, I took it, I dropped. Okay, and there's any other thoughts? What about item four, mentioned in chapter 16, to a good theft as a municipal violation?
Go ahead, Ms. Semmel, I mean, it's...
So I was approached by Officer Velotti, and he said that a lot of times when cases of theft, especially if they're under like $100, it's just like shoplifting, a lot of times when he sends them into county court, he doesn't see much of a difference, and they're, they're still doing it. And so he thought, or he came to me and asked me if that would be something that we would be looking, that we would look into for municipal court. So we can only do up to $750 in municipal court. We can, I mean, fines would be anywhere from 50 to 750.
I have a question, I'm, I'm sorry, it's premature, but safely can't keep shopping carts there? Would that help them with that? Because that's theft of a shopping cart by the definition that I read.
Well, I don't, I don't think so, I don't...
I'm not.
I, well, I don't think the officer would cite people for taking a shopping cart.
Does he allow them?
It would, it would, but I think the, the majority of people who take shopping carts are generally homeless people. And homeless people can be hard to identify, find, get to court, I mean, the whole...
But they could stop them where they're at and remove the shopping cart, right?
They could, but I mean, you know, like at Walmart for a while, you could walk out with a new stereo, and there was no one to keep you from walking out. So we're talking about, you know, kind of picking and choosing our battles. And most people, like if you're going to take a shopping cart, you're just going to go to the edge of the parking lot and keep wheeling. Right, you're going to keep going so they don't know. And then if you see someone with a shopping cart, say down by the Riverwalk, somebody could say, oh, I just found this, I'm using it. Right? So it could, yes, will it not likely?
The thing about theft is one of the, I, I think, bribery is one of those things that just, it's habitual. I mean, you know, if they, if they steal a candy bar one time, the next time maybe they'll steal two candy bars, the next time maybe they'll steal that case, but, I mean, just use that.
Well, there's theft by check, by concealment, by shoplifting, by price switching. I mean, petty theft under $50, I mean, it's all theft.
Yes, and I talked to Kim Powell from the police department today, and asked her for some stats. And she said that in 2021 so far, there's been 53 petty thefts. She said that there's only been 10 arrests because the theft is like, if somebody took something from your car, and they can't quite figure out who did that. She said there's also way more theft, but it's associated with other charges. So somebody who stole something and then maybe hit an officer or something like that.
So why do we want to take this on rather than send it to district or county court?
Um, I think they find it that we pay, and again, with all due respect to my, my colleagues, you know, at the courthouse, we pay closer attention to it, we, we tend to, you know, pursue things. And, you know, not to pursue it to be, you know, hard on people, pursue it to see it to its logical conclusion, make sure they get like, you know, a deferred judgment, pay a fine, or take classes. But I think ours is a more user-friendly kind of system for the officers. And if we have people that we have really good evidence against, and they don't want to plead, it's easy for us to take people to trial and convict them. We have, you know, quite a few trials, I mean, not a whole bunch, but quite a few. And generally, there's not an entitlement to a jury, you know, because it's so limited in jurisdiction. But I think that's why, would you like to elaborate on that, Ms. Semmel?
No, I agree, I agree.
We, yeah, and we don't have the numbers that they have in, in same county court. I mean, you know, they're prosecuting DUIs and trespass, and they have literally like thousands of cases going on. They have multiple prosecutors, and they, they just have a lot, and it's just kind of easier for us to do.
I think one of the things that, I think it's not a bad idea if that's the case, you know, the reasons why you're giving us. I think that over the next probably two to three years, keep track to see if it really is beneficial. And if it seems like it's not really beneficial, then I think we merge the ordinance, whoever's here at the time. That would be something to consider at that point in time.
Well, we may want to, I mean, and I heard you, Mayor, we may want to always keep the ordinance. I mean, we have ordinances on malodorous foul. We do, oh yeah, malodorous foul, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, don't laugh, just kidding, no. Although they can be malodorous, I got to say, but we have a lot of really...
At this time, I need to excuse myself, I have another engagement I have to attend, but thank you all, I appreciate it. And I, I agree both, on both cases, taking, taking a hold.
Thank you.
I thought like that's the direction the council wants to go.
Okay.
On item five, all of the special regarding power and light reliability, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I know after our retweet, retreat, there was, there was a lot of retweets. There was some concern about the reliability of our system. I will say that it is like the rest of our infrastructure, very old. Our light does a great job to keep things going. We, the switch here is in needing a dire need of replacement, and the director has been working on an RFQ whereby, because of the specialty of the electric component, we're going for a request for qualifications for an engineering firm, and it's, it's framed like a design deal, so that they can come in, analyze it, put together the, the whole packet, and then build it. So that, that's a big, big portion of reliability out there. And that, and that switch here being hard to replace, I think the last time we may have found one, one of the breakers on eBay. So it's time to change that out. So the director is working on that, and we'll, we'll go from there. The other thing was the, the budget and the shortfalls coming in power and light. And from that, the reason, the big drive to do the AMI metering system was to get everything upgraded, all our meters reading correctly, and, and having that accurate information to do our billing. And I apologize it in credit for council, but we have seen an uptick in, since the installation started in 2018, an uptick in, in our revenues going forward. They're still not quite done with those, let's see, what else can I add to that?
What percentage of those meters have been placed already? I think there's a couple thousand meters or something?
Yeah, there's 42, I've got three utilities in my head. There's over 4,000 electric meters, and we're about 50 meters or so short of being completed. And those are backordered, and light, the water, and the gas meters, they're backordered because of a little tiny chip in the reader, and I blame it on COVID, we can't get those. So, uh, let's see. Also, there was question on past billing practice with estimating bills. It's actually a program that's built into our utility billing process. There's some times when the meters can't be read, there's dogs in the yard, there's things like that. We've, you just estimate, and it's based on usage from past months, and they're sent a bill. And then when we read the meter, it's made up, you know, to, to make up the difference, to catch that meter up. With the AMIs, that should go away completely. We may have done a little more estimating than we should have in the past, but that's going away. And then with that, I, I don't know if council has any questions or...
Good, Mr. Bona. I, I don't, Mr. Bona.
I don't care.
What, what piece of equipment did you have to buy on eBay? What is a switch, educate me?
Switch gear is where, it's like a large size home breaker, where it locks in, and it's, it's driven home by air, so the piston shuts it in, locks it into place. When that goes out and burns out, we don't, we don't have any replacements. It's, it's, there's a compressor that's constantly, not constantly running, but keeping a tank full of air to drive those home. We're doing, we're asking for automatic reclosures where if it throws, it automatically kicks back in. And, and then we usually have three, three tries, and then it stops. You can adjust it for one try, two tries, three tries. A lot of times, it's a tree branch that hits a line and knocks it out. If it recloses back in, it stays in, or good. If, if it's a car that took out a pole or a transformer or something, then, then we call the guys out, so.
What would you estimate the cost of replacing that unit?
Uh, we put in for some of the cultivation fees to, to do that in last year's budget toward the end of last year, we're anticipating anywhere from $350,000 to $400,000. That includes the engineering and, and the, you know, pretty...
Mr. Sh, any other questions, Mrs. Brady?
No.
Frank?
No, I just, I kind of, was kind of interested in seeing if we could get an evaluation on our substation to see if everything was up to date, especially the transformer capacities and stuff. And I know the switches, I was there when one burned out, it took a long time to get it fixed. Does ARPA have any expertise? I mean, they used to have guys that would come in and evaluate our... I mean, they used to have guys that would come in and evaluate our substation where we wouldn't have to pay to see if we could bring it up. Because I've, you know, it's, it's really an old substation and we really kind of need to, in the near future, kind of look at replacing it.
That is correct. Hopefully the analysis out of, out of this whole, uh, engineering study, we'll have an engineer onboard that knows our system and will continue to upgrade. ARPA does come in, um, they do, uh, our transformer oil through a group thing and they check all that. They do have the mobile substation.
Right.
That will probably be required when we, when we do this work. We'll coordinate with them, they'll bring it in, switch over to that mobile substation while the work is being done.
I saw something, I didn't read it all, but there was something in here about electrical transmission on these laws where there was money available. Is there something that we might be able to get on upgrading?
I'll look into it.
Yeah, I just wanted to look at that and I thought there was some.
I think, and to tack on to what you're saying is one of the things that I would, I think is needed is to really see what the entire city's situation as far as our electrical grid and what it would take to, at least to get it up decently towards should be. Because we have a pretty adequate grid system in town. What things, what needs to be changed? Where does it need to be changed? You know, is it downtown, is it the highway there? I don't know what that would take.
And we have, we have two voltages.
Yeah, that's another thing, we never upgraded that, right? How come we quit on that? When I was on council, we were planning on changing that all at thirteen eighty.
Yeah.
But we still have forty-one sixty.
We still have four circuits that are four one six.
So kind of like our traffic study, I think at some point maybe we need to try to allocate somebody to get an entire city on their electrical grid. Anything else?
No, that's fine.
Hi, I appreciate you circling back with us and giving us all that information. And I'm, we got great reports from all the directors, generally of the departments, up in their five-year firm. We didn't get one from Power and Light and Coven Law and what you all are saying. Are you going to work with that director to get us one so that we can evaluate? Because that was one of the reasons we wanted to have that.
You bet.
Mike, uh, we had discussed, um, one-on-one, um, that you had examined line loss calculations, if that was the right term. Is that something that you're going to re-compare after all the meters are done and just see if we fall into the industry acceptable standard or, um, is that, how long of, how long of a, um, study is that? Is that a study you can do in-house? What, what are the parameters of that?
So, um, just rudimentary, what we have, uh, kind of going on now is we're able to read the meters, the AMI meters at any point in time, um, and then read them again at a certain point in time. That way we know based on those meters, that usage minus streetlights and other things, you know, that, that we, that are not metered. And then we can compare that from electricity coming in from the Tri-State's and Isabel meter and compare line loss there and we'll, we'll work toward that. But, um, uh, as was kind of reported, we're, we're purchasing more electricity than we're selling, so we've got line loss, which is, you know, it happens in electricity. You have line loss, you have electricity loss.
There's an industry standard that we should follow.
That's right.
Within, and as long as we're within that industry standard, it's a good, uh, proof of our due diligence that we're, we're properly metered in selling or purchasing.
Correct.
And that's something that we can do ourselves?
We can, or we've utilized an MPP, uh, mean, Nebraska Municipal Power Pool and just because it is in, and they're in Nebraska, but Mean Energy is throughout four or five state region and they have that expertise.
Okay, and then, um, the, the fleet was mentioned, the vehicle fleet for the electrical department, is that in process as well?
That is in process. The director got me a, uh, kind of a quote so that we had something to work with and I asked him to put together, uh, bit specs for that. I guess I can throw the number out there, it was kind of a good deal at the time and I asked him to move quick. It's two hundred and twelve thousand dollars for a line truck with the auger, so.
How long do those usually last?
That depends on usage, I mean, um, like, uh, was reported, I think our, our older one is nineteen eighty-eight. Depending on how many hours, you know, they have on them and how much we actually use them. It's, it's not just like vehicle miles like a car, it's hours used, how it's used and how often. Any other questions, Mr. Cherry?
I, um, was curious, the, the comment was made that, um, one storm could be detrimental to us where, I mean?
That would, to me, that switch gear.
Okay.
That would take, take it out and without replacements, eh, we'd have a little bit of a gap in time to get it back on.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, that would, once we address that, that covers, covers that?
That covers that, but like I said, our, our infrastructure is ancient, water, sewer, gas.
That, that's along with every other, uh?
Yeah.
Uh, municipality around the country, so.
Right.
Okay. I have no further questions.
So that you mentioned that three hundred thousand dollar possible price tag for that switch, uh, the money, where would that come from?
The marijuana cultivation funds that's been set aside, our cultivation funds are growing, um, and that is strictly for infrastructure work.
Now, I mentioned earlier, it's kind of like our traffic study to do a, a study for our electrical grid system. With that, is there anything, or is it too late to put something like that in for our set, in sets? We said through the sets?
Uh, they, uh?
Or is that closed already?
No, they're, they're, they're constantly taking stuff. I, I might have, I didn't, I don't know if I put a study in there, but I did put all our utility infrastructure needs, so.
Yeah, because we can get some, because that's one thing that, as always, kind of concerned me, our electrical grid system in town, because you hear a lot of issues in town where we're in different areas.
Any other comments? Any upcoming items that council would like to discuss?
Yes, I have one right now.
Other than the last five or six people, a baker's dozen amount of people, they always approach me and the first thing they mention is the potholes or the, the condition of certain streets.
Right.
And, I mean.
Yeah, now that you bring it up, uh, what do we, the, all that area that the bricks have been taken out on, what, First Street, all the way down? When are those going, are those going to get replaced though?
So, I think I've mentioned this to council and Bob's left, but, um, when we, the gas line that we replaced had concrete on it in there forever. And then when we replace the water line and you, you pull those bricks out of the street, you lose thirty percent of them because they're broke and when you pull them out, you got half, so. I asked the guys to mark each one when they, so they could put them back together. So what we're, we're thinking is doing what we've, we've done because this is, First Street is on the historic, you know, brick. We're going to do concrete sides with a center brick. So we replace the brick, but we, we have park, parking that's concrete on the side so that we can keep that. But with that comes all the curb and gutter of the ADA issue. So we're in design and we're trying to get something put together. It's going to be, well, alley A was a hundred and fifteen for half a block. We've got three blocks of, uh, curb gutter sidewalk, I anticipate. Two point five million. It'll be a project and, and hopefully in the infrastructure and, and DOLA grant rounds as they, you know, right now, the biggest ask in DOLA is six hundred thousand. They've cut everything back. Hopefully that'll turn around.
Anything else?
I was going to ask you, do we have a noise ordinance after a certain time of evening?
We do.
Okay, uh, because by the college up and down Fourth Avenue there, up, up Colorado and down, I mean, Charlie has to know about, I mean, these cars are ridiculous.
And motorcycles.
And, yeah, motorcycles.
Yes.
You know, I was way over on Maple Street coming down there by Toyota and there was a yellow car going down on Make Commercial Street. I mean, it was even hard to hear it that far away.
Oh, I know.
It was a yellow one.
It's ridiculous.
Especially after ten o'clock, it's like, really?
This is the middle of the day.
We have that issue in several places. We've had a gentleman come before council.
Yep.
That had a decibel meter.
Yeah.
It's a long time, we do.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one to enforce, to catch them.
Yeah.
And then prove that their decibel levels are.
Black car, the black Mustang.
Yeah, black Mustang.
Well, you know.
He just does it on purpose. He does, he has to. He's been doing it for years, just about.
Well, he'd lie if he would stay home and that, that would really be a good solution.
That's what I'm trying to say.
I was going to say, three years ago, that was you doing that.
It was.
Yes.
Mr. Gregor, do you have any items that you'd like to report?
No, no.
Frank, you said you had something.
I do. I'm going to talk to you, Mike.
Okay.
Garfield hasn't been done since nineteen fifteen, any improvements going up that hill? It's right here in the paper. Where is my lights? Where is the street? It's right here.
Right.
It gets right there, nineteen fifteen.
Did you have no idea what to do?
Yeah, it came out of the paper. Couldn't have come out at a better time.
Did you contact Cosette?
Garfield is also one that's in design because it's a narrow, goes through there. Steve wants to add a gas line up there to loop it. We want to have a, a trail on there.
Keep prepared, didn't you?
Yeah.
I was ready for you.
Anything else?
That's it.
I'm kind of following up on the comments about noise. I think it would be, uh, I would like to see us do a work session on general quality of life issues in our code and to talk about whether it would be a good idea to change the enforcement of them, um, so that it's something that is doable. I, I, every year we put out our notices about snow removal and weed removal and the fines that are going to come, but it's my sense that that happens rarely, that we enforce them rarely and because we do that, people can ignore it. If they, if it were a more reasonable fee and it was done quickly, I think it would snap people to attention better. And with regard to things like, we're doing a much better job, the police department's doing a great job on jump removal and, and weed citation, but the noise issue remains something that I hear a lot about. The other thing I'd like us to think about is sidewalks and whether or not there's any sort of a program that we could get together to improve the sidewalks throughout Trinidad. Some kind of way that they, so that they're going to meet up with these lovely ADA entrances and exits to our, our, um, our intersections. Some of them just go off into nothing. And I think it would be a much better thing for the people of Trinidad to have sidewalks in some sort of a consistent manner, type. And if there's anything that we can do from a, a planning point of view, I would like to see that.
Sure, I will.
Give me an example.
Of what?
Of, of what you're saying where the ADA is.
There, I believe it's on Nevada. I think there's one that they're billing that doesn't have a sidewalk that comes into it, but I've seen it around and there's several places around town.
Even by my house on San Juan, you guys are doing those and there is no way in the world, uh, that it's passable because the sidewalk ends and then an alley curves and then, I don't know who built it when, but there's a, like a six-inch square curb. It's on the, um, south side, Mike, I'm sure you know about it. But, yeah, it's impassable between the.
When I walk around, I will regularly come to lots that have no sidewalk at all. And I understand that that's the responsibility of the individual person, but if there's any kind of a promotional thing that we could do or, you know, when other improvements are done, that that's taken care of.
For one place, one place that I think that is kind of actually dangerous, right there at Chabino Park, right across, it, it's gravel basically. The other side has a sidewalk, but the sidewalk is next to the, uh, the football field there. There's, it's not a sidewalk and I think that's kind of what you're talking about.
Yeah, and just to make the city more walkable and if we're about exercise and outdoor recreation and if one tries to run, you're going to fall in your face.
Yeah, and maybe sentiment has changed, but we have a whole section on, on sidewalks and what council can do to enforce that sidewalks are the responsibility of the property affronting that. If we find it in disrepair, we can, you know, cite the, the property owner and then if they don't do it, we can repair it ourselves and backcharge them. I've been here too long, I've been here almost forty years and we've never done that. And, you know, and then we, uh, we also have tried to incentivize by actually putting, I think at one point we had two hundred thousand set aside for property owners. We advertised, we will help you, we'll pay half, we'll not take your, so, um, somehow we've got to look at, um, how we do that.
Yeah, it's expensive and I, I understand the challenge that it is. Ours costs one thousand dollars to replace our sidewalk.
The four hundred block of Colorado on the other side?
Yeah.
Horrible.
Yeah.
You know, you know where I'm talking about.
So I, I would say this is a common problem in, in cities all over the country and, uh, it's kind of politically uninsourcable. You know, if you said, we're going to, we're going to charge property owners to repair their sidewalks all of a sudden and we're going to get it all done, none of you guys get reelected. Because that would, that would really push people the wrong way. So having the sidewalks be the responsibility of the property owner creates this, this catch twenty-two where you can't really enforce it politically in a systematic way and the city's not responsible for creating a network of sidewalks. And so we treat the pedestrian transportation network as a separate type of network from the vehicle transportation network. And so one can fall apart and go into disrepair and the other one gets maintained. And so I, I think like what some cities have done is they've created sort of a public system so that you can plan for how that gets, how that takes place over time and eventually maybe over fifty years or twenty years, all of your sidewalks get repaired and maintained. So some cities will attach that as a little surcharge on the utility bills, uh, and then that, uh, and then that goes into a sidewalk fund or you add it to the property tax or you add it here or there.
Is that what they did in Santa Fe?
No, Santa Fe has the same problem that we have. Our sidewalks are terrible and unusable and they're all, uh, you know, built by the WPA. So they're falling apart and we don't have a solution there.
I'll tell you what happened where, opinion terrace right there. When we did the, I think when, when we did the gas lines, what they did is, uh, over a period of, I think, five years or something like that, they put it on the tax rules so you would pay out X number of dollars per year, so that helped, so that you're not out like, except four thousand bucks, one of them got shot, there might be eight hundred bucks or whatever it is.
Right.
But that could be workable or in the case like you said, if there's some funds that you can offer to the individual owners to say, okay, we'll pay a portion and you pay the other person, but if they're not coming forward, then it doesn't actually do.
And even that system will get you piecemeal repairs. Even if, even if everybody came and opted in, you'd get like random bits of sidewalk repaired all over the city, but you wouldn't necessarily get stretches of sidewalk that are accessible.
One thing that it would do is if, let's say you did it and I live down the street from you, it might incentivize me to say, okay, maybe I need to do it to fix mine, so. Sometimes that's, sometimes that's normal. Anything else?
Anything that you have?
I just had a quick question. I think it's in Nevada at Broom where you put in the new ADA. Is this one of the switch back in it? Is that getting railings?
Yes, we're, we're waiting on, like everything else. It, it needs railing, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious. And then, do you, where, where does Santa Fe Trail, when you think that's opening? What's up?
So, I, I actually, they're going to pave tomorrow. I got a notice because it's right in my front door. And I was told that the contractor is paving the lot over here and then they're going to move up there. So, before this meeting, I went to see the lot. Sure enough, they're paving. So, we've got oil down on Cedar Commercial behind the Marty Feeds. I don't know what that called it. So, they're paving. So, tomorrow, we should see a caravan, a paving machine, rollers, everything heading up. They should be paving that. I think they're finishing up some final sidewalks today. I saw concrete being poured today. And then it's just final touches of striping and open.
Okay. So, like August issue?
Yes, definitely August issue.
Lots of people. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Yes. Good. I've got a couple in there.
Okay.
In your packet or auger provided, the CML notice for municipalities to make appointments to the CML Policy Committee and determine whether or not your municipality will make any legislative or policy proposals for committee to consider. So, CML, you have to email Megan Dollar before August twenty-seventh. So, if council, anybody wants to be on the CML Policy Committee. I didn't want to jump in when Debbie was, but that's, that's one there, I think.
I'm currently.
You are currently on there?
Just stay on there, I guess.
Okay.
We have it now and then, like this last year, and I had Karen kind of fill in for me. So, she would be our second person.
Yeah.
Yes. And I think that would be something that if council sees anything that they would like to consider introducing as far as a legislative item, bring it forward and we can probably get together with Debbie to help work on that if there's something, you know, that needs to be addressed.
The other thing there is we closed on the property on Linden. And if you drive by, we've already mowed all the weeds and took down portions of the fence that were falling. So, it's already starting to look good. And lastly, and most importantly, I'm going on vacation next week. So.
Oh.
So, I'll be out next week. How's that, you need a break?
Don't get used to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. No retirement for Mike.
No duck hunt.
No duck hunt.
That's all I have.
No, I'm good. I'm good. Thank you, Doug.
All right. End of work session. Thank you, guys. We'll see you next week.